All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with Shakurum. Tony Rodriguez?
Present.
Kathy Ayers?
Present.
Cynthia Rivas Mendez is present. Today's Tuesday, December 5th and we're starting at six. Today's Tuesday, December fifth, and we're starting at six ten P M. At the Arnohne Elementary School. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast channel oh eight and one oh seven one H D version and online via this link. W W dot YouTube dot com slash the Brockton Channels. The agenda today is, we're going to have a presenter. Dr. Renee Haywood, doctor, who's the R Assistant Superintendent Equity Diversity and Inclusion. We'll talk a little bit of our D R E I mission. Our E D I training policy. And then we'll have Dr. Haywood talk about the past, present, and future of the E D I office. We'll have other business and adjournment. So to start this meeting, I have a rough draft of just why the Diversity Race Equity Inclusion Subcommittee started. That should be the page I just gave you. Again, this is a rough draft. I'll make sure to have it concrete before the end of this year. A lot of this was also influenced by the vision and mission of our E D I office. So the idea of the Subcommittee, I'll read about it, but it's also to be able to support the E D I office as well. So I'll, I'll read what I have. The Diversity Race Equity Inclusion Subcommittee was initially formed in two thousand and twenty on the basis of the need of the district before the E D I office was built. This Subcommittee is committed to making sure all voices and their stories are heard, especially those that are least represented and have been historically underrepresented and marginalized, and to make sure these voices are part of the decision-making process. It's important to recognize the work and contribution of our white allies among us and how important their collaborative partnership is for this work. So our vision of this Subcommittee is to make sure that the district continues to understand, empathize, and solve issues related to equity and diversity. Our mission is to move forward with a urgency purpose to create and sustain a more equitable, diverse, and inclusive school district that is reflected in our policies, our practices, our workspaces, and professional development in our curriculum. The guiding principles are very, very similar to our E D I office. I just wanted to add race, which I will be adding. I, it's empty right now if you see it. And then, similar to our Office of Equity Diversity Inclusion, there's four focuses here. And you're gonna see those same focuses on the policy that we're gonna talk about today. So, area one, a huge one that we've talked about in the past. And unfortunately, that hasn't been the case the last time we pink slipped. But the idea is to continue to support the district in increasing recruitment and retention of more diverse educators and staff that are representative of our student body. The second one is to improve the school climate by embedding policies that will support students, educators, and staff to best achieve their academic, socio-emotional, and professional goals. Number three is to provide professional development for us, the school committee members, on an annual basis that gives them the tools to center equity in policy, practices, and decision-making. As many of you guys know, this training has been provided in the past by Manuel J. Fernandez, who's the founder-president of Mendez Group, and Amina Pilgrim. And then our last area is to support the district in developing decolonized curricular instructional resources that promote practices that re-center transformational teaching and healing to meet all students where they are. Again, this is a rough draft. I'll make sure to have this concrete. Are there any questions or suggestions on what we have?
No, I think the only comment that I would make in our defense is, we really do wanna increase recruitment, you know, the way it should be increased. But unfortunately, when you have layoffs, it's a very prescriptive process of how we can lay off. And so unfortunately, for lack of a better phrase, you throw the baby out with the bathwater. We, we lost a lot of really great individuals in the layoff. But I just, I think I want the public to understand that that's not a choice. That's, there's a very prescriptive way that that has to be done.
Yes, I completely agree with you. And just to add to what you're saying, I just think when we do decision-makings, we just have to think about the whole picture. I think when we made our decision last year, I take, I hold myself accountable through my reflections. We, we thought, this is the route, right? Versus, we didn't really look at other options. And I think with that, with this particular experience, now we understand how important it is to pause, step back, you know, like, it's great that the superintendent can give us their suggestion, but at the end of the day, we gotta make sure that we look at the full picture.
Agreed.
Any, I mean, I hate when people call me out, so I'm not even gonna do that. But any other questions or concerns?
No, all good.
All right, so then the policy. So Sarah Spatterford, our attorney, was able to give me one that she adopted from a district. If you see, there's two copies. So the one in blue is the one that I looked at to be able to adapt to our district from the work that we have, that personally I have seen. And so, if you wanna, if you want me to read it for the record, I could. But I know that Dr. Haywood has spoken to me that she really, she really believes that equity should be in the forefront. So it's E D I, not D E I, and that's why I made sure to edit it in that way. So I could read the policy, and this policy, hopefully, we can recommend it to the whole school committee to ideally pass it before the end of this year. So, the wording is, "The Brockton School District is committed to embedding equity, diversity, inclusion, and anti-racism in all aspects of education and learning for our students, our faculty, staff, and community. This should be done in adherence to all other relevant policies. There are three complementary components necessary to achieve these goals: professional development, experiences, and curriculum. It's important that each of these occurs as an ongoing and continuous learning practice." I think it's important to note that it's ongoing and continuous learning because this is something that we should continuously do reflection in, especially as we make decisions, just because we're, we're humans. We're never gonna get it right. But if we continuously are doing the work and not, not make it seem as just a checkbox, then that's the purpose of the work. So through professional development, the district must provide professional development, discussion, and self-directed learning on equity, diversity, inclusion, anti-racism, and other difficult conversation training to all faculty, staff, administration, and the school committee. This training specifically for the school committee is on a continuous learning path by an external provider when necessary, or by the Brockton Public Schools E D I office, and she, and should be given at least once a year. So, because it's a training that we have, I did put once a year. But again, it should be an ongoing and continuous learning practice. The reason why I put at least once a year is just because there's just so much that we know that gets in the way. So at least we're held accountable to have that training at least once a year. But that doesn't mean that it's only once a year. Let me know if that wording is not clear on that.
I just have a question. Is this, you know, we had the formal training with, is it Manuela?
Yeah, Manuel Fernandez.
So when we had that, is that what this is, that formal training? Or is this, is this what we'll get training from the E D I office to support Manuel's training?
So either, it'll be a continuous path. So ideally, we would get an external, and then when needed, the E D I office will support any other training we need. That, I'm not sure if you guys feel, could be conflict of interest sometimes, or how you feel. But I think it would be great to still have their support in things that might be needed.
No, I, I was gonna say, I think that we should have a formal training by an external provider like Manuel every single legislative session, at the very least. And then I think that E D I and Dr. Haywood's group can support any changes or any updates, things that we should know about. That should definitely be on an ongoing basis as well. I think, I think the policies, policy should reflect both, just in case one slips through the cracks and the other. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I would rather have it in writing so that with every new turnover in legislation, we all have to go through the same formal training again. And then, and then we get continuous updates of learning and, you know, ongoing support with anything that's changing.
Do you mind repeating those two points, please?
Sure. So I would say have a formal training by Manuel or whoever's an external party for each legislative turnover, every session. So at the very least, every two years, the whole school committee is getting formal training on equity, diversity, inclusion. And then, the second piece would be the support that Dr. Haywood's department can do with E D I within that timeframe and in addition to that formal training to ensure that we're capturing everything. And we're, and we're constantly focusing on this with every decision we make.
So like, one, one way that I see the support of the E D I office is every year they do the ACT Conference? Is, is that something that we, like, we should entertain to be part of that? And maybe they do a session that is specifically for school committee members? Or school committee members choose from the different trainings that are given? I know that's all day November, usually Election Day, so that could be tough, but.
That would be tough. You know, I know I spent the whole day up there. But I think it should be, you know, like, some type of phased-out process, not like forcing like this one whole big day to have people take some training. So I think it should be, you know, phased out throughout the whole district because it's not just, you know, you have your faculty, staff, but you still have your transportation department and so forth across the district to, to make sure that we get this, to get the training. But just to piggyback, like, when you said in the session, so you mean in far as the school committee getting it that one time per term? Or is it we doing this every year?
I think at the very least, it should be for each legislative term.
Okay.
Like, so every time we have a new election, whether you're re-elected or not, everybody gets a refresher, or they're hearing it for the first time.
Yeah, I, I think that's like, that's the reality of it, right? That, because two years happen so quickly, as we know. I ideally think it should be annually. I don't know if that's gonna be a big push, like, a big pushback from the school committee or, you know, just because we have other things. But I do think, even if it's asynchronous learning, I think it's really important to be annually just because that work is, if you're not doing it, I, what I find is that people that are not actually doing it on their own need that structure. And it's just important to, like, where are we going? And I know Dr. Haywood will talk about the E D I office. But in regards to us, decision-making, and policies, I just think in order to be reflective, it's always important to have, as you know, I know you have sent me a few of your job that does that structure. So that's the only pushback I personally have. But I do understand when we talk about feasibility and like other things that we have on our plate, every two years could be more, go ahead.
I, I agree with you on the yearly basis because things change. You know, something can happen dramatically. And we have to make sure that, you know, we adapt to those changes. It's just like going to school, you know, school committee, you know, curriculums change year after year after year. So I think, you know, we have to be the leaders to make sure that we show that way again, these training as well as the staff.
Exactly, the, the examples.
I, I think that's a good point, Mr. Rodriguez, because the one thing I was gonna say is, I have no problem with it being annually. I would just wanna make sure that every time we have the training, it's on new topics or additional topics so that we're constantly learning. And it's just not a repeat of what we had received the year prior. And we've all been to conferences like that where you're like, okay, I've heard this before. That's the only thing, because lives are busy. But with how things are changing, you know, we've gotta be able to respond quickly. So I don't disagree with it. I'm just trying to be realistic with time and meetings and everything else.
Yeah, and I think the Mass, they're really on top of this. Like, when I went to the Mass and Mass Conference this year, I mean, this was a huge talk of like culturally responsive, equity, diversity, inclusion practices. So I think like even being able to talk to other districts, like, what are they using? Would be, because the idea is to expand out as well. So when we think about our external, our external parties, it doesn't always have to be the same parties, because every party's gonna give a different perspective. So that's something to think about for sure.
Yeah, good point.
But in regards to the wording, we could put it as annually because it holds us accountable to keep that. Or we could, we could do it biannually.
I would just leave it annually. We all know things happen, and we could always.
Yeah.
It's all on schedule, and so I think annually is, you know, best suited.
Yeah, I think if we put annually, at least we'll try to make it annually. And to Mr. Rodriguez's point, if something comes up, something comes up. But at least if we have it annually, we're making an effort for it to be once a year at the very least. I'm good with that.
Thank you. And then, that's the professional development part. Experiences, the district must provide our school community with the experience necessary to be aware, thoughtful, and active global citizens who are prepared to recognize and promote equity, diversity, inclusion, and anti-racism. The district must ensure that these experiences foster an understanding of the repercussions of discrimination, oppression, and bias, respect, and celebrate differences, and strive towards the creation of equitable and just systems. Any questions on that? Sorry, I'm just gonna bring up. And then, for curriculum, the district's curriculum and activities must be holistically represent the world's many perspectives and voices, including the work, lives, and contributions of various marginalized identity such as BIPOC. BIPOC defined as Black, Indigenous, People of Color, LGBTQ plus community, which is lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, queer, questioning plus, women, diversely abled, age, and developmentally appropriate, and et cetera in various fields such as STEAM. STEAM means science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, business, government, arts, literature, music, sports, activism, and more. And must be informed by pedagogy experts in equity, diversity, inclusion, and anti-racism, and include the history of oppression, injustice, resistance, and counter-resistance, education, activism, and legislation, as well as current systems of privilege and power.
I underlined, because I love the part, and must be informed by pedagogy experts. I think that's really important.
So any questions or concerns on the experiences and curriculum part of this policy?
No, except that we're gonna, we're gonna change the title. Are we gonna put equity first?
Yes, thank you. So is the title of this okay? It's, right now, currently is Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Anti-Racism Policy.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that our suggestions are noted. So then in our next school committee, I wanna just recommend it to the whole school committee? Do we need to recommend it to policy Subcommittee before the whole school committee?
No, because there's a three-part process. So there's the discussion, which is to the whole committee, and then there's the vote.
So that means we have to do the policy then?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So we could actually, because the policy is a committee of a whole. We can actually suspend the rules and adopt this whenever we feel like it is if we want it. We can have all three in one meeting.
Exactly. I was like, it is all of us already, so we can do it.
The proper way is, as Kathy stated, that, you know, you have to have, when we deal with other policies. But, you know, we have the authority to suspend those rules and enact this policy as a committee of a whole at any time we want.
So should we get a motion to vote for the policy and the purpose of the D R E I Subcommittee?
So, do, on the, on these changes, these are duly noted that you took the notes that we're gonna change equity prior to diversity and, which other language did the?
The annually training.
The annually to yearly.
Yeah, and it's also noted by Lisa on the minutes. So I can always refer back to that.
Okay. So do we wanna have this enacted at the next regular school committee meeting, which is at seven? Or do we wanna wait till the following meeting to actually impose it? I would make the suggestion to have this at our next regular scheduled where, you know, we, we have members that are out of state. I believe Mr. Sullivan is in Florida, and Joyce is at a conference. And I'm not sure if the mayor is.
The mayor's not here tonight either.
He's not here, just to give them the opportunity to, to voice their pains as well and take a vote. I don't think it's gonna fail. I'm confident in that. So I would, you know, just hold off on taking a formal vote this evening and put it off to another, which is the twelfth or the eighteenth.
The eighteenth. Is it the eighteenth or the nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Oh, the nineteenth.
Sorry, it's the nineteenth, and it's earlier, sorry.
So, that would be my.
Yeah, I agree.
My recommendation on that.
Okay, perfect. So can we, someone?
Motion to approve all of the. Motion to approve all of the edits, the change of the title to put equity first in all of the notes that we have discussed in the three areas, the three complementary components of professional development experiences and curriculum.
Properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, that was properly passed. Next in our agenda, we have the discussion of the past, present, and future of our EDI office by Dr. Renee Heywood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just waiting for the PowerPoint to be queued up. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me, giving me this opportunity to just kind of wrap things up for, before the end of the regular calendar school year. But EDI, then, now, and tomorrow, I kind of pulled everything together, so there's not going to be a whole section for then, now, and tomorrow, just in the essence of time, because there are two presentations I'm making tonight. But the foundation of the work, you have seen all of this before, but it's just kind of pulling it all together. The mission to be a leader in this work, the vision to move forward with urgency, and then our three focus areas. So whatever we're doing is connecting to that. And then the proficiency commitment, you have seen this on, you know, our brand's equity is proficiency. And the EDI office is committed to leading the efforts to build a more representative, equitable, and inclusive school district that fosters positive student outcomes. So the end result is always going to be positive student outcomes. And with that is, you know, all the support that is embedded in the vision, mission, and the focus areas. Again, the work here, there's a lot to talk about. And so I, we just don't have the time, so I'm just doing bullet items here. But for the most part, this is, if you wanted to just have one slide of what the work is, professional development, family and community engagement, student engagement, capacity building, affinity spaces, and support, partnerships with other departments, curriculum and resource development, leadership development, and culture and climate. And I've probably forgotten some, but that at least gives you a peek of what the work is. It has evolved over the years since 2021. And, yeah, it's evolved. This is a lot of words on here, and I know that you have copies of, you know, this PowerPoint presentation. But, you know, we're really focusing on the why. The why is, again, the student results, right? We want to have positive student results. And we have to be intentional about bringing change, so that we can move our students forward. And there are inequities that are connected to race, culture, economic status, and other markers that have persisted at all levels of our society and at EPS as a system in society. And it has carried and reproduced many of these biases. So all of us have them, we reproduce them, we keep them. And this work is really about addressing them, acknowledging them, so that we can create an environment that is optimal for learning for our students. And then the what, that first slide that I mentioned, that does talk about the what. I did some work with Colin Rose. He is a DESI consultant. And so this slide and the previous slide is something that he and I worked on. But the what, because the work has expanded, and I think that because it's so new, I think EDI, especially in schools, has popped up probably over the last five years, but really strongly over the last two or three years. And school districts are still adding positions, expanding offices, or creating an office, so that work is still ongoing. But there's a system-wide strategic and partnership and oversight that is part of the work. So I am embedded in teaching and learning. But there's also an oversight of district-wide activities, taking a look at hiring practices, you know, how do we share resources, et cetera? So that is the next level work that needs to be done. Then capacity building is really what we've been focusing on. Culture responsive practices, of course. And that, you know, I mean, schools have been talking about culturally responsive practice for a while. But this again is being very intentional, so that the work can continue in the building. Because right now, there are two of us, myself and Mr. Williams, who are 100% dedicated to EDI work. And then we have Dr. Soraya Presme Kalix, who brings the parent engagement piece to the work. And we don't have our student, you know, specialist, and so, and curriculum development. So that, that work was supposed to be built out, but of course finances. He and I are doing the bulk of the work and partnering, and using the expertise that Dr. Presme Kalix comes with as well. So we're making do, but there's a lot of work that could be done if we had the resources. So one of the main things that we do, we provide resources. There are links, and if you don't have the electronic version, I can make sure that you get it of this presentation, because then you will see the table of contents, that top right of the elementary school EDI starter kits. So all of the elementary and middle schools were gifted an EDI starter kit, which includes books and resources. By, I think it's the end of this week or next week, we'll have, we will have delivered all of them. We took a pause around the conference time, because we just needed to do that. But you'll see the amazing books that the schools received. We were able to share them with students and the administrative staff, and really start talking about how they were going to use it. So they had to talk about it, instead of us telling them how they should use it. If they struggled a little bit, we gave them some ideas. But really, it's about their ownership of these books. So if you look on the left, there's pictures there. But again, we'll send you the table of contents that will highlight the subject. So it could be Native American stories. And then there'll be a quick blurb about what the book is about. And on the left are pictures of those books. And so schools are getting at least four copies of each book. And so they may be doing projects with those books throughout the year, and not just, you know, focusing Black literature during Black History Month, the Native American literature during Native, you know, this is, it should be an ongoing thing, because we are preparing ourselves, our kids, for global society. And then that second link there on the top right is the EDI. It's a SharePoint. And so since you all have BPS emails, you are able to access that. It is, I designed this probably about a year ago for a place where we can put all of the resources. So it's continuing to be built out. But instead of looking for your email, or where's the shared file or folder? It's, it's in there, and there's a way to sign up for classes, et cetera. But again, some are live, some pieces are live and some are not, as we have certain things available at this time. Let's see here, and the books that we purchased, they were funded by an Equitable Design Grant in partnership with the bilingual department. And we purchased them from a Black-owned company, because we understand that that is important. So the ACT Conference, you all heard about this, I think, at the last school committee meeting. You know, this provides district PD, district-wide PD for all of our employees, minus a few that Mr. Rodriguez mentioned. And so we will be getting to those groups as well during this year. So that is the plan. It has evolved and turned into a major deal, which is great. We started off as something virtual, just kind of introducing what EDI is all about, and then the different terms, et cetera, to just give a, you know, a foundation for the work. And then year two, last year, we had our first in-person conference. And so we have seen the shift last year to this year, from 60 workshops to 75 workshops, pop-up restaurants. We are recognized by DESI, and it has become a Brockton brand. People are talking about this conference. They ask us about it before we're even able to, you know, brag about it. So they already know, which is great. And the future of the ACT Conference, because this is a large endeavor, and I have no idea how this was done by the EDI office, we had some extra help with our admins in the, in central office, which was great. We're really going to need more hands-on deck. We've already strategized a little bit, and we're going to do a bigger debrief with, I think it might be this week, with a larger group, just to see how we can tweak this a little bit. But we need a better way to register folks, because there are folks that don't register at all. And then that could be a thousand people that my office has to sort by hand. That is a huge undertaking, and we have to find a better way to do that. And then there are also external folks that would be willing to pay to come and attend. And that would defray a lot of our costs if we were able to handle that capacity. So that is the future of the ACT Conference. ACT Restaurants, so this is what was happening inside the building, for those of you who weren't able to see. And then outside the building, we had food trucks. And it was such a great event, has nothing to do with me. It was really about the spirit and the excitement of the folks who were attending. I saw smiles and laughter and, and just wonder about, wow, this is a really great day. For those who missed it, you know, hopefully they'll come next year. But I'm really, I'm glad that these folks had the experience. All right, this is also something that we do, so I'm really just highlighting a few things. We started off kind of as people wanted more after last year's conference. They wanted to learn more. So we had introduction to equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. It was an eight-week course, six or eight-week course, open to all educator staff, so whoever wanted to sign up for it. And it focused on the fundamentals of equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. It also used the glossary that Darnell and his folks created to give language to this work. So it was a really great experience. I was able to sit in on the class and some of the presentations as they talked about their identity and cultural journey. The next class, what if I say the wrong thing? So as I was sitting in the first class, that was some of the concern. As we do this EDI work, I want to do this, but I'm afraid I'm going to say the wrong thing. So I happened to find a book that was called What If I Say the Wrong Thing? And had a five-week course with, you know, folks from special education, nursing, paraprofessional administrators, et cetera. All of these classes are open up to whoever wants to attend. And so we were able to really dig into biases and how they affect what we do and what we say. And there were, there were videos embedded in that. And I think it really helped folks to establish culturally responsive habits. Because, you know, we've lived, and we're all adults, and we've established some unhealthy habits. And so it takes a while and education to unlearn those and then learn new, new habits. Another thing that we do is creating positive culture and climate. So I think that that's kind of a theme of the office, really, is to help people feel welcome and that they belong, and that we want to partner with them. And so here's a few pictures. We connected the central office staff with community members just to have some coffee and pastries, and start to break down some barriers between the two. We are out there supporting community events and partnering with others. I was able to partner with Amir from the mayor's office to do a training for Diversity Day at the Brockton VA. And so those are the kinds of partnerships that's beyond the walls of our district. It's really, there's a public out there that is looking at the work and wanting to connect. And so that is a benefit for us publicly. And also internally, we collaborate with, we have a really great relationship with the PD Director, bilingual, and Human Resources. We partner, and I'll just talk about the course at the end of this. We were very fortunate to have the funds from Equitable Design. There was a grant that they gave us for summer interns. And so this is a picture of our interns and their siblings. They helped us design the ACT Conference booklet. They organized all of the EDI starter kits. They were the ones that, you know, did some follow-up with student ambassadors who were interested in the program. And they also received training from Mr. Williams in restorative circles. And that was life-changing. We would like to have funding to continue this program for high school students. That grant has run out. And one of our graduates is attending Harvard University and said that the EDI glossary and the training he received with us has given him an extra edge. And so that's what we're, we're doing. We have to prepare our kids to have conversations at high levels. And I'm glad that he has that to say, because that's, that's what we're supposed to be doing, preparing our kids when they leave us. Family engagement, this is Dr. Presme Kalix's work. And the mission is there, and it's, you know, really focusing on being culturally sensitive and connecting with the families where they are, instead of always having them kind of mold into what we want them to be. We need to meet them where they are, so that we can have a partnership together. And then family engagement thrives on collaboration. So if you look on the right, there's a framework that, that Dr. Presme Kalix created. And it has some really great foundational phrases there. You know, trust, community home, student success, co-leaders, co-designs, equity partnership. There's an expertise that our families have, and there's experience that they have. We need to have dialogue, two-way dialogue, and not just us telling them what we need them to do. And there's a partnership that we need to be building. And then there's intentional and personal and culturally sensitive, like I mentioned. So that is the framework. And if you look there, part of the work is, and again, it's always part of the work, there's just not enough time to talk about the extent of the work. But school culture is one of the major focuses. As an office, we've created the theme "We All Belong." And so Dr. Presme Kalix is working with different schools to help them create a welcoming and inclusive environment for all. So parents need to feel welcome when they come into their child's school, and not wait at the counter for someone to even look up. There's got to be a welcome when they come in. And then the Apple Project, Advancing Parent Professional Leadership in Education. And then there's also the MAP model. There's biweekly workshops throughout the year that are offered to families through the Family Academy and other community organizations that partner with family and parent engagement. And then Infinite Campus there, to create a hub for families at the community center to learn how to navigate the portal, because that is something that parents, they do struggle with. So some of that work has started as well. Yes?
Ends in 2024. And this might be a bigger question for a regular school committee meeting, but I often, I often get concerned that we've built up such a great thing, artifact thing, whatever you want to call it. And then the grant ends. And then I guess my question is, how do we ensure those dollars are in the next budgeting season, so we don't lose all the hard work that we've done?
You are speaking my language, Ms. Ayers. That's great.
So like, how does that, like, what is normally the process for that? Or is that something that we need to talk about as a committee? I guess I'm just curious to ask. Because I see it ends, and I'm like, what goes with it if we don't prepare?
So I don't, is that on my next one? Nope, it's not on, it's, it's on another slope.
But it's on the one before this, I think.
Right, there's no line of funding for family engagement in our budget. And that, of course, needs to be fixed. And I would ask that the committee would consider that. It's running off of grants or collaboration with others, but there is no line item in the budget for family engagement.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Community meetings and gatherings. So from the beginning, I was getting lots of calls, you know, can we meet? I want to know what you're doing, kind of thing. And so I realized, to save time, let's do a monthly meeting with everyone. And so that has also... And so that has also changed into a monthly meeting with our entire department. And now Dr. Presme is leading those meetings because it's just a natural fit with the work that she already does with the family and community. I'm gonna keep moving because I'm, I still have some more. But celebrate and collaborate. If you look here, again, EDI is not just in the walls of the district. But MLK Breakfast, we see on the right, in this very building. Dr. Robert C. Jones, our first Black superintendent, was celebrated here. In the middle is AMSEL, the Association of Mass School Equity Leaders, the launch. And that is Governor Healy in the middle. And so equity work is, is being launched statewide and being supported statewide as well. And then on the left is our Dr. Amina Pilgrim. And on the right is, you know, our community members and our internal folks, Mr. Williams and Dr. Michael Robinson on a St. Louis trip that we attended. And some of what we've learned is being used, but we need to push that even more. Special projects, I'm really just gonna list these because of time. The EDI team, the response team, we have created that. And so it depends on what's going on in the district as to who we pull in for events or workshops that require more than just the few that are in the EDI office. Student Equity Councils in middle schools, the Student Ambassador Program with Promise and BHS. And the hope is to expand that to Edison Schools, Restorative Justice Circles. We've done them in those schools. Staff trainings for school culture. We'll also be doing a January professional development with the MTAs in Paris. There was a training that I collaborated on with Kelly Jones with Bilingual to train the administrative assistants in clerical Paris to create a, an environment that welcomes families, especially those who speak different languages. I've been doing planning with the Associates of School Climate and Culture about leadership and really helping them to problem solve on my day at the high school. I'm there on Tuesdays. And then we're finalizing the poetry contest for all schools, planning for Black History Month. We provide cultural resources throughout the year, the EDI Glossary of Terms. This Saturday is the Right to Read Event at the Brockton Public Library at 10 o'clock, 10 to 11:30. This is a national event and we are one of the few who is hosting in Massachusetts. And then next for me is to work on a Dad's Read Project and videotaping fathers' reading stories so that they can be used as resources in the classroom or with families. What is next? There needs to be a district-wide reorganization of family engagement and community engagement. Right now, it's in many different places. And we need the funding for that work. We also need administrative support for that work. And I, I think that's it. I mean, we've, we've been working and trying to get the grants. But again, we want the work to continue when the grant is up. I'm just gonna move on to my next piece, or at least queue up unless you have questions. Because I do want to get to this Reflect Course that we have. So if you look here, you have a booklet. And this is, yeah, well, I don't know, because don't we have to start right at seven? You sure?
Yeah, you could.
Okay, are there any questions or concerns?
Any questions or concerns on anything from the presentation?
The only thing that I would like to see is an actual structural map of how our EDI office should be structured. If there's any other EDI offices within the Commonwealth and what that structure and how would that look for us? And also the, the funding portion of that. I'm, you know, I don't want to bite my tongue. But I, I believe strongly that moving forward with our budget hearings, that you will be in front of this body presenting your budget, as it should have been. So we're not dealing with no, no more financial crises. But I would like to see that structured how it is. And then also just to piggyback off of the, the funding mechanism when it, when it comes to grants. I mean, that's something that we have to take a deeper dive into. Where we have to put a pillow, depending upon what the number is and what we're dealing with, to make sure if that disappears, that we do have some funding left over to actually support the hard work that's being done. So it doesn't disappear.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a few questions. So you mentioned the next level work on hiring policies. I was just wondering if that's a further conversation that you continue to have with school committee members on like, can you hear me?
Somewhat, I'm.
Sorry, I was giving you my back. So the next level work on hiring policy specifically, is that something that you're collaborating specifically with the school committee to understand like, what are the resources needed for that? And how that work is looking or is needed?
The hiring?
Yeah, you mentioned ideally having EDI work, the next level work on hiring, supporting, right, the human resources on hiring policies. Did you mention that, right?
So, yeah, more collaboration with that. I mean, I'm on every major, there's someone from my office, I'll say, on every major interview panel so that that is represented. In terms of the hiring, I mean, the issue is, like teachers, I don't, I don't hire. They're hired at, at the school level, right? And so I wouldn't be involved in that. I think the hiring is probably more of the retention. My concern is really the retention. And I've been trying to collaborate statewide on what can we do about that? Because that's, there's a bill, and you're aware of the bill that's out there, that's trying to keep a representation of the school body or student body in schools when there is a rift. But that's like a larger thing. But again, it's a wish to, to have that.
Okay, thank you. Also, I just wanted to ask about, you mentioned the ACT Conference. I just wondered, how was participation at the ACT Conference? And, yeah, how was participation at the ACT Conference?
What do you mean, numbers or?
Yeah, numbers. Because I know it's something strongly encouraged. But, you know, I mean, if I don't feel, feel like, yeah, I could call out. Because I, those are my days personally. So I just wonder if that's good participation, how is it going?
So full transparency, I've been informed, 600 people called out sick for the ACT Conference.
Out of how much?
Out of, I don't know, the 3,000.
3,000, okay.
Yeah.
And then is there anything in structured, like that principals can do some motivation? Or like, how is that being advertised as something that's highly encouraged? Or is it required? How is it being advertised?
I mean, it's a required workday, but people can take their sick days anytime. So it can be mandatory. But if you call out sick, you're entitled to the day. So I don't know what else, you know. For me, I would, I would just want to know if, if it's a group of, you know, a certain position that didn't feel like there was something available for them. I would want to know that, because then we can structure things next year to make sure that they know that this is a, a good workshop for them. If it's a large number at a specific school, then that's a school culture issue. And so I'm trying to look into that, just so that I understand how I need to pivot next year. Or what work needs to be done now.
Is there space other than, in regards to feedback? Is there space given, not immediate feedback, but after, that people, that employees are able to give?
Yeah, so the professional development department requires that there's a survey in order to get the PDP, PDPs.
Okay, so in that survey, they give feedback in regards to, okay. So that's important to fill out. And then I had a question about the student interns. So it sounds like it's a paid internship opportunity. And it's fully informs them, like you mentioned, the, the student that said that it gave them an extra edge. Also, like, is this, where's the access in this? Like, do I know that I can apply for this and how?
Yeah, so it was sent out to all of the high schools. And whoever applied, they were interviewed. So if they, you know, followed through. Because some people might start an application, they don't complete it. So, but if people completed it, they were interviewed.
Okay, and then I just find, is there, like, something that people encouraging, you know, others to like, apply versus just giving an aid? That's just an ad, that's just me, like, speaking.
I understand.
Because I understand how students operate sometimes. And then, yeah, I know the budget line sounds like something that we'll definitely consider. Yes, go ahead and.
All right, I'm gonna try to do this quickly, we'll see. But you see this booklet here, our high school printing department, thanks to Nate Bright. He printed this out for us, which is great. This is a workbook. There's also an online component that is a fillable PDF that goes with this because inside you'll see that there are videos, video links in red that are clickable. So this is a follow-up from the Implicit-Explicit Bias Protocol that was created last year. And the issue was, when there's, you know, an employee that says something that's inappropriate, while that investigation is happening, they are on leave. And there's some work that needs to be done or could be done while they are away with students, as well as, you know, the work that they should be doing. Instead of someone coming in and they, they do some work with our human resources and then they come back to the classroom. But there needs to be more of a restorative approach, approach. So this is a course that I've been working on for the past several months. It's called Reflect: A Path Towards Healing Harm. And there are six modules. The first one is Self-Awareness, Understanding Your Own, next, Understanding Your Own Identity and Bias, Valuing Diversity, Managing the Dynamics of Differences, Rejoining the Community, Establishing a Habit of Reflective Practices. So I open it up with asking folks to have a growth mindset. And I define what that is. Because, you know, often if you are required to take this course, you're, you know, there's some feelings. And I, I want people to learn, if there is a restorative opportunity, then let's really do it. So the first module, you need to reflect on the incident. You need to be more aware. And you're reflecting on how your actions affect others. There's the Prowse Questionnaire that helps you understand what makes you happy, what frustrates you. And that can really get under why we react the way that we do in tense situations. It's become pretty popular with some of the movie stars out there. They actually take it as well. The next one is Understanding My Own Biases, Identities and Biases. So I go through what it means to have an implicit and an explicit bias, talking about the differences. I take them through the cycle of socialization, the cycle of liberation. They also do the social identity wheel for themselves. And they get into their own cultural identity. Module three, Understanding What the Melting Pot Actually Is, Understanding Brockton. So I pull out our own Brockton statistics so that they can understand who is actually in our district, the languages that are spoken. There's a video in there about the origin of race. How was it even created? What's, what's behind all of that? And then what is systemic racism? Because there's a lot of terminology that can be thrown around in the conversation and folks don't understand what you're talking about. So they need to understand the language. And then on the right are, based on the languages that we have in our district, I go through the different cultures and also speak about white culture as well. And then Module four, Managing the Dynamics of Differences. What are microaggressions? I call them assaults on dignity. It's been redefined by other researchers as such. Cultural competence, culturally relevant and culturally responsive, the difference and similarities. There's an article in there. What does it mean to step out of privilege? And what does it mean to call someone in versus calling them out? Module five, Returning to the Community. So this is the restorative approach. And then you first have to define what are restorative practices? What are circles? And what's the purpose of them and the features of them? Then the language of apology. I realize this, as I'm putting these things in there, you could really cause more harm if you don't apologize the right way. For those of us who are married, you understand what I'm talking about? And so the language of apology is defined in there. And, you know, really understanding people and using the right apology goes a long way. Then, just as the individual did the social identity wheel on their own, they will do some work with the students. The students do the identity wheel on their own so that they're prepared for the return of the educator so that they can have a conversation, an informed conversation. And they, this last piece, What My Teacher Should Know, is a piece that I learned from our student interns. They, I asked them as I was writing this, what, how would you want a teacher to return to your class after, you know, causing harm? And this is what they wanted their teachers to know. So there's quotes that I use in the book directly from them. Module six, Establishing a Habit of Reflective Practices. This is a framework that I've created as part of my doctoral work. I just tweaked it a little bit just for this book. But there's an opportunity for you, as you write about the incident, you just free-write, it's guided. And then you put the paper away and then you come back and read it as a reader. And for those of you who read, you look at characters in a book and you say, wow, you can see some issues that characters have. And then you reflect again on that. And I give six pages of that so that you can establish a habit of reflective practices and do no more harm. And these are the three rounds that will happen when a teacher returns. This is the restorative process. How were you harmed by the incident that took place? That's one question. The next one is, what identity is most important to you? And how would you feel if that identity wasn't valued in the school community? And then the next, was there something that was said or needs to be said that will help you move forward so that the class can go back to learning? But we have to acknowledge what actually happened. And that's it. I did this training for our principals so that they would understand how to support a classroom when this kind of thing happens. So that was the last piece, but we're not gonna practice today.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, this is awesome. Like, for that person that, that did harm, but also just for personal reference to use and to work, do the work. This is very informative and just very well thought out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the book, the free book.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Nope.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Haywood.
Other business?
All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, this meeting has ended. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
What's hap- no, seriously, a student's version of what's happening at the high school. Because I know how we're looking at it and I know how we're addressing it. But to hear it from you and, and I want to, I want to express to you that being authentic and transparent is the most important way you can present to us. So don't sugarcoat like we want to know what's going on, like from your viewpoint. But to hear you say even there's been a small change and we've moved the needle just a little bit in terms of absenteeism with the teachers. That's huge because that's just the first step. So, thank you.
I really loved how you said, especially as a student, the perspective of that one word that you use of accountability. I think that just speaks volumes and is so important to like just accountability in every aspect, right? What you were referring to at Brockton High School, but just across the district, especially us. So just thank you for being accountable, being here today as well.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on.
Okay, moving on, we'll have the EDI recognition of student ambassadors with Danielle Williams to present.
Good evening, everyone. I am very honored to be here today, especially for the occasion to recognize these student ambassadors behind me. So I'm going to first read aloud what they have been presented. So it says, "Congratulations, certificate of recognition presented by the Brockton School Committee and the Brockton Public Schools." And then it says, "For demonstrating exceptional leadership as a student ambassador and for being a positive role model for their peers." And it's signed by all the school committee members and the superintendent. So as I call these incredible student ambassadors up, I would like for you to join me in giving them a thunderous, thunderous applause. So first, it's my distinct honor to bring forth Chloe Chavez. Kamari Hill. Hence, Oscar Madiras. Kaitlyn Chavez. Amari Jean Baptiste. And finally, but certainly not last, Eliana Amaranti. And we have about 23 other students who are not here, but I'm going to be so happy to deliver this to them in person. Thank you.
Do you want to take pictures? Would they like to take pictures with school committee members?
Renee.
You got a mug for the camera? Yeah, probably over there. It's actually warm around here tonight.
Cynthia, you ready? No, Tony's missing, but I figured we could at least get some. I'm sorry, Sharon.
Yeah, he's in the, taking bio break.
Yeah, I forget he, oh, here he comes. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Okay. Next on the agenda, what I'd like to do is, you know, we, we have a district of 24, 25 schools and programs. So I'd like to, each school committee meeting have a school, a middle school, an elementary school, two or three sometimes because of the number of schools to present what's going on at their school, news, goods, updates, areas of focus. And so the first school we'll have up today is the Downey School with Principal Yolanda DeFalco.
Wonderful.
Slide presentation, yeah, we got to see the slide presentation.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Dr. Walder, are you going to kick us off? All right, excellent. She's coming. I'm second on the docket.
Good evening, and as Dr. Cobb just said, one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing is really highlighting the significant work that is happening in our district. Our attendance for the district is at 92.2%. Our goal is 95. So we will be working to continue to move in that direction. Our enrollment is up slightly from December 1st. That's not on that slide. So this is just district-wide. We are currently at 15,227 students. So our enrollment is up slightly from this time last year. So we are trending upward and most of the enrollments are impacting our elementary level. And so our elementary numbers are climbing. And so what we are also seeing is a significant change in our multilingual learners. So since July 1st, the start of what would be the start of this school year, we have enrolled 932 multilingual learners. And so when we're looking at how we are programming schools, budgeting schools, we have trends that are happening in this district that we really want to make sure that we're highlighting in this space along with the actual work that is happening in our schools. Because our schools are rocking, we're not hearing enough of that. And so when you get out and you get to see what they look like, how our kids are doing, how our teachers are functioning in spaces with all of the changes that have taken place, we really need to highlight and honor the work of education in this district in a way that we haven't had a chance to yet this year. So that is the purpose of us bringing the schools before you so the principals can tell their stories of what's happening in their schools so that we can also highlight some of the challenges that every school is facing and so that we can work together to make sure that we provide the best quality education for kids in Brockton. So handing it over to the principal of the Downey.
Thank you very much. My name is Yolanda DeFalco and the principal at the Downey School. I am a Brockton student, graduate of Brockton High School. Prior to being principal, I was a classroom teacher, an ESL teacher, and a literacy coach. So my lens is expansive. Jennifer Colburn is our assistant principal. It's her first year with us as the assistant principal. She and I graduated from Brockton High School in the same year, so that's really exciting. And the face of the front office, we have Mr. DJ Nazan. He is our admin assistant. We have just about 600 students in grades pre-K through 5. And our specialized programs include integrated. We have integrated classrooms in pre-K through 5. Life skills, we have pre-K, kindergarten, grades 2 and 3 for life skills classrooms. And we have grades 3 through 5 in EI, our emotionally impaired classrooms. Some areas that I'm really excited to share with you are building communities, our Wonders implementation, and our thoughtful inclusion. So for building communities, this has been a huge piece that Mrs. Colburn and I started out this year. And we started strong with our new curriculum, the Character Strong Curriculum. And that is the social-emotional learning curriculum that Brockton Public Schools brought in. We have tied Character Strong itself, as well as the traits that go along with it, to our PBIS. We use it with morning announcements every single day. We use it at lunchtime. One of the slogans with Character Strong is "What we practice becomes a habit and good habits grow character." And we are really trying to instill in all of our students the different traits that help them build character. And we started Duck of the Month, so it's essentially your student of the month, citizen of the month. So our first traits, we had our kindness, respect, responsibility, and gratitude. So our ducks of the month get a little certificate and a little rubber duck to bring home with them. Character Strong has actually made a huge difference in the culture and the climate of the school in general. So we are really happy to see that implemented. Our restorative practices, last year, all administrators had the opportunity to receive some training in restorative practices. And what we do is we help students work through problems. So we have them work through any conflicts that they're having, take accountability when accountability needs to be taken, and go forward with either strengthening a relationship, building a relationship, repairing any harm that had happened. So that has been a huge piece this year. And something that we have spent a lot of time on, particularly with our 5th grade students, is an anti-bullying curriculum. So this was through essentially MARK, which is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And we had reached out because we noticed that the 5th graders were having lots of conflicts in, outside of school, on, online with the cyber bullying. We noticed that conflicts as far anything from just not being kind to putting their hands on each other. And we really wanted to do something to combat this issue that we saw and really strengthen our community in the 5th grade. So we reached out to the MARK Center and they were unable to have someone come out to our school to actually do a presentation, but they did send us the curriculum. So between myself, our assistant principal, and our school adjustment counselors, as well as the grade 5 classroom teachers, we have been taking the curriculum that they presented to us, really building the classroom community. And some of the, some of the topics that are discussed are what instances do you feel that you've been bullied in school, outside of school? What are some of the issues that you see in the classroom? What are some ways that we can stand up for ourselves? What are some ways that we can help stop bullying and together they problem solve? Be actually, one of the pictures that you see up there is the boy with his hands on a piece of paper. One of the activities was, the paper was crumpled and they had to pass it around and try to make it look brand new. And so that was a little analogy to, once you hurt somebody, that they never are the same. So it has been very powerful for our students. We're seeing small changes in students. We're seeing big changes in students. So as far as things that I'm really proud of, the building communities is, I think, our number one top spot. Also, we have Wonders Implementation. All teachers are using the Wonders program with fidelity. So every time we walk into a classroom, we see the Wonders materials out. You see a small group and there's also Lexia. There's a student on Lexia. Lastly, our thoughtful inclusion. We are, we have been really careful and thoughtful about maximizing inclusive opportunities for students with disabilities, for specialists, lunch, recess, and academics. So our specialists have students in both sub-separate classrooms and general education classrooms together. They are always integrated into lunch, academics, as they are ready. We decide based on each student which subject they should begin including, integrating into, and then we start there. And I say recess, if you take a look, we do have a brand-new program, a brand-new playground this year. And the playground has some areas that are particularly designed for our special needs students. So students in wheelchairs who have limited mobility can use the playground. There are some sensory things on there. So this has been, it's something that all of our students, pre-K through 5, general education, and students with disabilities have really been able to enjoy. Some areas that we are working to address. Data analysis, as far as supporting structures and building capacity to use data effectively. We have plenty of data. And our challenge comes in finding the time for, for teachers to get together and to actually review, analyze, and then determine next steps. Professional development, increasing opportunities for teachers to meet regularly for planning, curriculum, and data review. As I just mentioned, it's really finding time for like content area teachers or like grade-level teachers to get together. That's not impacting the school day. If they're out of their classroom, they're missing the instruction. So really being creative with that. And attendance. As far as attendance goes, we are monitoring, monitoring regularly. And we are trying to get all students to school by way of ensuring that their families have the support that they need to get students to school. Character Strong is helping us build our school community so that the kids want to be there. But that is an area that we are also working to address. And here's my why we come to work every day. Just a couple of quotes. The first one goes along with Character Strong. A student said, "I showed gratitude this morning. The crossing guard was helping kids cross the street, so I said thank you to him." Grade 5 student, the Downey School is so unique. And I love the Downey School because it's a great school and everybody else gets to come here too. And we have our wonderful custodians. We have Be The Reason Someone Smiles today. Each year, he adds something and that's right in our front lobby when you walk in. I have a picture, the, the boy holding the yellow paper. That's Brody. And he received a positive office referral. This is something else that ties into Character Strong. We ask teachers to check off which traits they are seeing and we read their names over the announcements every Friday and they come to the office and we cheer and we yell and it's a whole big, exciting thing for them. There's a picture of Mrs. Colburn celebrating a friend's birthday. Everyone got to sing happy birthday to him. And lastly, our staff is so unbelievably dedicated. And this particular picture was taken on Lee National Denim Day. And our staff and our students are one big community. And they are, they understand the reason that we come to work every day is for our students. Thank you very much. That is all I have. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Principal DeFalco. Next is Dr. Lovell from the Ashfield Middle School.
Hi, everyone. This is Ms. Montron, Charlie Montron. She is the associate principal at the Ashfield. And I am the principal and together we run the best school in the city. All right. So I just wanted to give you a few quick facts about our school and, and who we are. Just to let you know, 78% of the whole school got an A in citizenship. That means that they were not written up at all for anything. So that's a huge win. We've been doing it like Character Strong and some of the other programs as well, but that was a big win for us. Currently, we have the second highest enrollment for the middle schools, right after the Plouffe, then the Ashfield, even though we're not the biggest building. We're the smallest building. So that's been a little bit of an interesting thing this year. We have right now in our school, 166 of our students, or 32%, are multi-language learners, which is a big deal. And most of those students are really new. They've been, they come every day. Every day we come in and there's, there's a new kid. So that's a, that's a thing. We do participate in the Empower Your Program, Empower Yourself Program with Mr. Turner. We've been working since he first started in the district. Ashfield was one of the first schools. And our kids are continuing with that. They're going to Bentley, I think, and then next week to the Live Trading Room. So we have a lot of success with that program. So the Ashfield always has a lot of students participate. We have another win recently. Just check the data and we are under 10% of chronically absent, which is a big goal. Our, our target is like 15 or 16%, so we're well below our target right now, which means that students are missing less than 10%. So we run that report and regularly check in on that. So this is a, that's a big win. We have 184 of our students, or 36% of the students, are in the Honors Academy classes. So you can see if 30, like we have almost a reverse curve here. We have a lot of real newcomers and then we have Honors Academy. So it's a, it's a pretty interesting mix of students in our school. We have an Ashfield Allies Group, which helps to support diversity in our school. They meet twice a week during elective time. That's what they choose to do with their time. So students who are not in an active intervention are able to go and be part of our allies, which is a great thing. We have a 21st Century After School Program. We're targeting mostly 6th graders this year. There's a lot of sort of career kind of focus in those programs that we're running. 20% of all of our students, so 102 kids, are students with disabilities. And of that number, 35% of the 20% are substantially separate students in our City Resource Room program. So again, we have a lot of high-needs students in our school. One of our, another thing that we were able to do this year to our moderate special needs teachers, we were able to assign them so that there's an 8th grade, a teacher working just with the 8th grade math and science and one working with the English, and now they're able to get into the Common Planning so they can be part of the lessons from the start and not having to go in and sort of find out what the plan is and how to remediate for students. So they're right in with the planning of the lesson. So we're pretty excited to try that out this year and it seems to be working really well. All right. So these are the areas that we're really proud of. Our three big areas were, for the accountability status from last year's MCAS, we hit the 30th percentile, which was a lot of growth. And we had 55% substantial growth toward our targets. And that's across many of the subgroups were also significant, especially our multi-language learners. They have met their targets for attaining language proficiency, so they actually met the target, which is great. It's very hard to do because as they improve, they're reclassified and taken out of the group. So to continue to make that progress is a big deal and the teachers have been working very, very hard on that. And the other thing which impacts our school that's been a big deal is, since we began PBAS in like 2019 is when we first rolled it out, we had for the first three months of school about 562 sort of write-ups of behavior issues back then. Last year, we were, you know, having coming back from COVID, our PBIS in full swing, the teachers really working on building positive relationships with the students. It went down to 291, all right? I'm sorry, it went from 469, so we went from 562 down to 469. And this year, for the first three months of school, we were at 291. So that's anything from kids being written up, from not having, you know, not being on time to different, different issues. It's been a great drop in, in that. So we're really excited about the culture that we're building in the school and I think a lot of it comes from the relationships that the teachers are actively trying to cultivate. All right. So what's, what's downside? What are the things that we're working on now? The big things we're really trying to target is, like I said, we have a huge amount of students, multi-language learners, newcomers in our school. In our 6th grade right now, the class size is 40 in the class. And there is not a para in there to support them. We're just getting, I think it was just approved last night. Ironic. No, it's great. But that is, that was just approved so at least we can get someone who help, hopefully is a bilingual para who can speak the language because right now that's a big barrier with all the newcomers. Many of our students haven't used a lot of technology before and that's a big part of our school. So just teach, getting kids to log on, trying to get 40 kids to log on in 45 minutes is really a big challenge. So these are the things that we're struggling with. And grades, grade 7, not that much better, 38 in the class. And 31, grade 7 is 38 and 31 in grade 8. So this is something that, you know, that we are struggling with right now, but hopefully we can continue to make progress. But hopefully, we can continue to make progress with the students. You can see that the kids are not misbehaving. They're not, there's a lot of great learning coming on. We actually have some teachers from other schools coming to watch our teachers deal with their kids. And there's amazing lessons happening in the classroom. So it's a great testament to the hard work of the teachers. The other thing, class size. So when we look at, you know, well, why, maybe we could move some kids out, the regular, the, not regular, but the students who are not in bilingual program are also very high numbers. So, you know, we have 31, 32, 27. So it's not like there's 10 or 8 in another room. So we got, we got high numbers everywhere, especially grade seven and eight. We used to have six sections. With last year's cuts, we went down to only five sections. So we're taking the kids, dividing them up by, into five sort of cohorts for the day. So it's been a little bit of a struggle and that's something that we're looking to address. So those are our, you know, challenges that we're, and every day we come up with a new way to work on it. Okay. So now the last slide that we're given. Why do we come to work every day? I have a quote from one of our seventh grade students, Destiny. "I like how the Ashfield Middle School makes me feel safe and comfortable. I can be myself and make a lot of friends. That's why I love the Ashfield. That's what makes it different from other schools is I love being here." We do have a lot of great things going on for students, whether it's, you know, the ban, the electives, the honor roll assembly that was in the corner. We had like a candy bar bingo for all the students who made honor roll. But, and also I know you may have seen us on television the other day with the New England Patriots and the Naval Academy, Retired Naval Academy Minority Outreach Program came to our school with these robots and the students were able to program them and race them. It was, it was an amazing thing. That's Dedrick Wise, who didn't play in the game size. So he didn't, hopefully he didn't get anything at the Ashfield because he wasn't well enough to play. So, but we have a lot going on. We have the zoo coming in in two weeks.
Yep, next week.
Next week, all right. We've had, we've been to Gillette Stadium also to do a helmet concussion protocol thing about building helmets. We've been doing a lot of active things in and out of the building. Been to, some of the kids have been to the zoo. We head to the Science Museum. So we're really trying to keep as much engaging thing and open the kids' horizons for as many new experiences as possible. Any questions? Hi. That's it. Good?
Just have a second to exit. So as I mentioned, we, you know, we have a district of a lot of schools. I know, you know, Brockton High School, rightfully so, has taken up a lot of time and energy. But, you know, we need to make sure we recognize what's going on in the rest of the district and the great work, the hard work that teachers and staff are doing in the buildings. And, you know, when I do the school visits, I walk through, it's amazing. It's great. You know, the students are engaged, they're in the classroom, the teachers are engaging. They're working in groups, they're working, they're doing lectures. So we have challenges, but there's a lot going on and a lot of good going on in the district.
Yeah, there is.
Like I said, so every school committee look for, you know, two schools, at least 6%. Sometimes we might do three, just to kind of give you updates and, you know, get news, goods, and challenges. And I just want to thank, you know, Principal DeFalco and Dr. Lovell for their presentation. Thank you. Any questions on the evening, any comments? Okay. Next, I just want to do a quick update, a quick update on the Yonder Bags. I see we made a newspaper again about the Yonder Bags. So I really did take a second look. I reached out to the representatives from the company. And they, they actually have changed their policy somewhat because of the feedback from other, you know, organizations, school districts. So now we don't have to lease the bags, however, we have to purchase the bags. And we still have to purchase enough bags for the whole high school. So, which means, you know, and if we purchase them, you have to purchase enough. So if you're going to use them for the whole school, you'd have to like 10% to turn over. So we would have to purchase about 4,000 bags at $30 each, which would bring the cost to about $120,000. Exactly. And then there's four, and the requirement, the Yonder Company does do training. So there'll be four people, because there's one each main entrance for each house in the morning to help train on how to use the bags. So that comes with a cost of $2,500 each. So it's another $10,000. With about $130,000 if we really want to go down that avenue with the Yonder Bags.
So for some reason, and I could be wrong, I'm looking at Mr. Rodriguez to make sure I'm not crazy, but I thought they were like $10 or $11 each.
And they, again, they shared this to me. They had a new pricing structure. It was $30, $30 each. And I think that's because they're, it's a purchase, not a lease anymore because obviously they made money on the lease. I just, I had actually looked online to see where there were alternatives to the Yonder Bag. And I did find another company that's similar, but, you know, there are different trade-offs. So the, this company is called Phone Locker. And they're a company out of, I think it's Australia. And they, they sell the bags as well, between $15 and $30 per pouch for students. They have the same locking mechanism and magnet that the Yonder Bags have. But again, they're a foreign company, so I'm not sure how the exchange rate will work. And again, it's a purchase, so, and their policy is pretty similar. You purchase enough for the whole student body. Just to, we addressed that. The other thing is, you know, we, I know, I think initially we talked about using the Yonder Bags. It was the eighth grade as well as the high school. But from my understanding and walking through the middle school, phones are not an issue in the middle schools. They're put away, they're in the bags, it's not an issue at all. It's really the high schools.
So the only couple things. Number one, thank you so much for doing the additional research because it's something that, you know, not only did the Yonder Bags make it into the papers, but one of the other things that has been coming up more and more is they're, you know, recommending cell phone policies. Like you see it everywhere now where schools are all considering cell phone policies. So I, I kind of feel like we're not, you know, stepping out into unwanted territory. I feel like we're right where everyone else is and trying to, you know, kind of push structure. My question is, the only other, the only other bag or security mechanism is out of the country versus Yonder? There isn't any, I mean, that just, it sounds crazy.
It is. I was surprised as well, but that's, that's what I found. And I, you know, I didn't, I sent an inquiry online, but I haven't heard back from them as far as what, what their policy, their procedure is and purchasing and actually get a real price for Brockton High School, but I will follow up on that.
And I mean, understood. We have a huge high school, so it's like, obviously for us, you know.
Australia.
Yeah. But Mr. Rodriguez, please.
I know Desi had a program that will support us financially with the policy. So I'm trying to.
There was like a reimbursement or something? Like if we did it, they would, yeah, they would fund.
They funded a certain portion. So I mean, if it's, if we're going to purchase it and, because that's what they're looking at across the Commonwealth is to see what school districts, what policies are working and what's not working. So they can come up with their own because it's eventually going to take full effect. But I was just trying to figure out what the actual numbers is, if we can look into it. Because I know.
I'll look into it.
That was mentioned in previous meetings about them supporting the cost mechanism behind it.
And I know that Springfield used Yonder because that's where we went. But I'd be curious in what Lawrence is using and some of the other districts that are also, you know, doing cell phone, have cell phone policies, if they are also Yonder or if they've used a different company. Any other questions on the floor? I just wanted to actually open it up to everyone. Thank you for the research, Dr. Cobb.
You're welcome. Okay.
Yes, please, and thank you.
If you want, I can email a copy of that to everybody who else.
Or I'll scan it and email it to everyone.
Okay, perfect. So the next update is from City CFO Troy Clarkson. Financial, we have a few things to discuss.
I'll leave everybody else a coffee but myself.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school committee. I'm happy once again to be before you to discuss several issues actually, but certainly a general update on the status of finances in the Brockton Public Schools. As has become our custom, we've provided you with a general update. The budget summary that we've been sending you before every meeting. I did at the request of Member Azak, send this to you yesterday, so you had some time to review. If you'd like for future reports to have them sent even earlier, then we're happy to do that. But in looking at the report, the spending continues to be within prescribed limits. I will talk in a minute about an effort that we're undertaking to integrate all of the spending. As I've mentioned several times, this is general fund spending, but does not incorporate revolving funds and grants. So I'll get to that in a minute, but just wanted to speak to you in a, in a general way. And I'll certainly, as always, answer any questions you might have. One of the issues that has emerged in the last several weeks as we continue to review and provide feedback on the position control forms that we're using to verify funds behind positions, is that because the budget is set up in Munis the way that it is, and we've talked about this every time I've come to visit you, there may be requests for positions where there's no money in that particular line or that particular area. So we've developed a system, Dr. Cobb's, myself, and our respective teams. If you remember the last time we were here, we talked about the difference between the budget that you voted as a school committee and the budget that exists in this report. And so within those, what we call statutory categories, within the budget that you approved, under the authority vested in the superintendent, money can be moved within those categories. So we've developed a system where temporarily, for this year's budget, we have the ability to document moving some of that money around within the budget so that position control forms that come to my office can be supported by identifying areas where there are surplus funds right now and moving them to places where needs exist to fill positions. And so we're able to not only process those more swiftly, but to do so in a way that provides funding where it needs to go. And I think that's an important development of us working together that prioritizes the needs that are identified by Dr. Cobb's and his team to, to put people where they're needed. And so that, that's an important development. As we continue to try to understand the totality of the budget and where the funds are available, we're really trying to maximize the effort to give principals and department heads the flexibility to conduct their operations without limitations. And so that, I think, is an important development. Related to that, I think in the coming weeks, you're going to hear the term roster review probably quite often. That's an initiative that we've undertaken with the support and really under the leadership of our consultant, T.J. Plant from Open Architects. We're trying to develop a firm understanding of the relationship between the employees in the Brockton Public Schools and how they fit into the budget. Because we're, at this point, not completely confident that, that the budget reflects how people are actually being paid, where they're being paid from. So today, Dr. Cobb sent out a memo to all of the principals and department heads with an actual proposed, as best as the information as we have at this point, with a roster of who we believe is employed in those buildings or in those departments, asking each of those principals and department heads to review that list, to give feedback to us, as to the people that are or are not being paid out of those areas. That will allow us to have a much more accurate picture of the fiscal year 24 budget, where the money's being directed, where people are being paid from. And that'll give us a picture of, a clearer picture than this spreadsheet of where we're at so far this fiscal year. Along with that, I met this afternoon with some school and city finance folks. And we are working toward providing feedback to, again, principals, department heads, but also their administrative support staff in really understanding on a more granular level what people are being paid from grants and from revolving funds. Because we're now trying to move, to understand where folks may be paid out of grants or revolving funds. Possible that folks are being paid out of grants that have expired or revolving funds that, that don't have money behind them. So once we gather all of that information, we will have, I think, a much more accurate snapshot of where we are in fiscal '24 that we can then discuss with you. And that's really important. It's painstaking, very detailed work. But I want to thank Dr. Cobb's and his team in the central office for really being cooperative and trying to help us understand this and gather the tools that we really need to make that happen. What that will also do, and I know I say this at every meeting, but it's really our goal, all of this information that we're gathering will allow us to then work with Dr. Cobb's and his team to present you a fiscal year 2025 budget that has detailed information by school, by department, of who is supported in those organizations, what it costs to run those operations, and suggest to you that you actually vote a budget that reflects those costs. What that will do is allow us then, moving forward, to have a rolling understanding and a much more accurate picture on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, however often you'd like us to report, on exactly what the costs are. Because what we can tell you today is, in general, we think general fund spending is within the limits that you prescribed in the budget. But it's difficult to draw a correlation between this budget report that we provide to you at every meeting and an actual reflection of what it costs to run each building or each operation in the Brockton Public Schools. So we've made what I think is some significant progress in developing that information. We'll continue to report on it to you. But I'm pleased that I think we're, we're really moving forward in a productive way. One of those ways that we're trying to move forward is one of the sub items that I'm before you on tonight. As I mentioned, it one of my first, one of my first reports to you. The school committee is the body that has the ability, the duty, the responsibility to vote on paying prior year bills. We have compiled a list and they are before you tonight. Not only a memo from me and an attached spreadsheet, but actually each of the invoices. These are bills that have been provided to us, to the school business office and to my office, that are our prior year bills. And the proper way to address those is to bring them before the school committee and ask you for a vote. As you can see, the totality of these bills amounts to just over $113,000. In anticipation of the question of where that money is going to come from, if you have your budget report with you, in the section that's listed net school spending, under business office, you'll see under business office, there's a line for contract services that has a balance of well over $2 million. And that's where we will pay these bills from. They're from a variety of places. But for now, just to try to track them, that's where the money will come from. So yes, the funds do exist in the budget to address these. There are others, we believe, unpaid bills from fiscal year 2023. But we're working with all of the schools and departments to try to compile those. And hopefully at your next meeting or shortly thereafter, we'll have the final number of prior year bills. So if any of you watched the city council meeting, you'll see. So if any of you watch the city council meeting, you'll see that this is a fairly common practice with them as well. It usually occurs when vendors send their bills into the district or the city after the fiscal year has closed, and there's usually a window of several weeks if those bills are received after that period. Or in some cases, sometimes departments have bills and they get lost in the shuffle or they folks forget to send them, whatever the case is. Obviously, this year in the Brockton Public Schools has been a little extraordinary. Some may have had concerns that there weren't funds to pay the bills. At any rate, we're compiling these. It's important to bring them before you, so in the light of day, these prior year bills are being addressed. And it's just one more step we're taking to try to tighten up the operation and to have discussions here where they belong about what our financial responsibilities are. So that's all I have for a general update. Actually, there was one more item, and that is, it's listed on here, an appropriation of funds. What that really encompasses, what I've already talked to you about, as we progress through the fiscal year and develop that deeper understanding of exactly where the cost centers are, we may come to you and ask you to move money when there's money that's required within those statutory categories that you voted back in last June. If money needs to be moved between those categories, that can't be done within the staff. That requires a school committee vote. So we're monitoring that, those numbers closely, and may ask you to do some of those transfers as well. But I wanted to highlight for you before we even contemplated that, that that too is a role of the school committee and something we may do. If we are able successfully to work with you to create a budget for next year that's much more detailed than the budget you voted for this year, that will become, not in every meeting, but a more common occurrence, because the budget will actually be voted in more detail than it is now, allocating the money to each operation where we think it should be. So we're always working in three fiscal years, closing out one, planning, working within one and planning for another, and that's what we're doing right now. So we're getting ready, I think, to close the chapter that was fiscal year '23, and hopefully you'll have more to say on that in coming meetings. But we're working very hard in the current fiscal year to be more accountable and transparent and already starting to plan for next year. So, Madam Chairman, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I have one quick one, and this is, I wanted to be clear, this is no reflection on you at all, but why would we be getting invoices that are dated like August of 2022? I'm just curious. Like, you know, I understand that some invoice-
Written policies and some order to- Written policies and some order to, and I think it's the lack of structure and written policies that have led to this.
Okay.
And so one of the things we'll be doing is working with the school committee and with the administration to develop written policies for how this sort of thing should be done. By comparison, I can tell you, we, working with, under the leadership of the mayor, two years ago, passed Brockton's first set of financial policies. So written policies are something that I think act as guideposts and guardrails for municipal and school operations, but with turnover, so much here was done by tradition, and when someone would leave a slot, they'd say to the next person that followed them, here's how we do things. Formalizing that and modernizing that with written policies, I think, will help prevent this sort of thing happening in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions on the floor? Ms. Dahmer.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson, for providing those. Just to quickly recap, these are invoices for vended services. A lot of them look like, you know, just mechanical machinery, structural services, equipment supplies. There are invoices from 2020 in here for almost $5,000 for police services at various schools. I kind of, I share Ms. Ailer's concern that we're just getting things now from 2020, and I think this just shows how quickly things add up, that we're finding things that we don't know. When you mention policies and things, because these are vendors that we're contracting with to provide services to us, we're gaining the benefit of those services in the buildings, and the students are gaining those benefits, but how can we create policies that require those vendors to provide us with the invoices? And what is the recourse when they come to us almost four years later with a bill that hasn't been paid? Is that a public schools accounting office oversight where they're not watching that they haven't paid out an expected service that was obtained by the district? Or is that, can we expect that vendors will just come up to us with unpaid invoices from years ago, prior to some of us serving on the school committee, and say, this previous school committee never paid us for these services?
It's an excellent question. So I'll give you a little texture, a little history. You know, I've worked in several different communities in my career. In a town, these unpaid bills would be paid at either a fall or a spring town meeting, generally in the spring, but could be paid at both. In a city, it's done by the city councilor, in this case, the school committee. This is sort of conjecture, but I would say when local vendors understand that the city or town is vigilant about getting vendors to get paid, and that possibly if you submit it late, it could take weeks or months to get paid, then they tend to tighten it up. So I agree that we couldn't, we can't pass a policy to hold vendors accountable, but I think we can be more aggressive and track through various means internally what vendors have provided services and not billed us, and then follow up with them to try to encourage them to bill more timely. This, I will tell you, is an extraordinary amount, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but for those committee members that have been here for some time, I don't think this is a practice that's been employed previously in that, in recent memory, you've had unpaid bills. But as we can see from this, there are bills from previous years that probably should have come before the school committee. So we're trying to clean up something that has been an issue for a while. I, they're probably, probably, I learned this afternoon, there are more, I'm guessing that maybe vendors watching this on television that say, geez, there might be something. So we can expect to see these trickle in, hopefully not for much longer, but it's one of the things we're working on to try to prevent in the future.
Mr. Rodriguez, please.
So, and I know Kathy, you were in the training with me. So this is basically a system where I think that we should implement a warrant system. Tell me if I'm wrong, you know, when it comes to paying bills, I think that there should be a warrant system in order to make sure that these bills are actually paid on time, because it's concerning that, you know, we have an invoice from 10/22. You know, it's over a year.
Bills are paid on a warrant system here? I think what's missing here is the bills not getting to be processed for whatever reason, and that's why the prior year bills, and you can't simply pay a prior year bill on a warrant if the time has passed and the books are closed, then it has to come before the school committee.
So I understand that with the warrant system, so who on the school committee has that ability to sign it, because the school committee has to be involved in that warrant system? So you're telling me that we have a warrant system? So I'm trying to figure out who on the committee, or is that something that's been missed throughout the years?
So over at City Hall, we have a warrant system, and the mayor executes the warrant for vendors to be paid. And that includes school committee, school department bills that come over to the city. I'm not aware whether or not it's been a practice or not a practice for the school committee to execute warrants here as well. Something we can certainly look into.
I don't want to step on your toes, Mr.-
No, I know, but I mean, like, just being curious, I would, I think we need to take a deeper dive to see who has the authority on the warrant system here on the school side? I mean, is it the mayor, his authority as being the chairman to sign off on that? I think there should be an elected member of the seven wards that signs off on that or a sub-separate subcommittee to make sure that these bills are being paid on time, and that's checks and balances.
I don't want to answer specifically. I can answer broadly. Again, communities where I've worked, depending on the form of government, the actual charter in a community, I have seen communities where the executive, meaning the town administrator or the town manager, executes warrants, others where that, because of the charter, that authority is vested in a select board. So it varies by community, so I would suggest it's something we can and should look at here to see if the process that's being followed matches what's in our city charter.
No, I agree with you. I mean, we, you know, we're all looking for answers just to make sure that, you know, everything is being done properly. You know, we should just, you know, I know we don't have a legal here, but just to make sure that, that we, you know, that, you know, we do have a warrant system and we're not, you know, when did that warrant system process fall apart? In my four years, I've never, I've never seen a warrant system here, and I've been training with Mrs. Vice Chair, you know, we looked at each other like, we need to implement this, and this is way before the financial crisis.
And I, sorry.
No, no.
And to Mr. Rodriguez's point, I think we were both looking for the warrant system to manifest in our accounts review subcommittee, and so that's something that we should look at in terms of how that information is actually getting to us so that we can make those decisions in a timely manner versus getting a stack that's this big, and this is no reflection on you, getting a stack of papers this big on everything that's already happened in the past.
Sure.
Nothing that requires decision or meaningful discussion that's coming up. And I think that's part of the process that we've been missing as a committee, that's all. But to Mr. Rodriguez's point, I think we need to go backward to go forward in regards to that.
Just to piggyback, it's just like, you know, if I'm a vendor and I'm providing some of these services and it's been over a year, I don't think, you know, I would say that, you know, the city of Brockton is not, you know, friendly when it comes to doing business because they're not paying their bills. So yeah, we definitely, we need to take a deeper dive to, you know, come up with a better process and a quicker one so that we are paying our bills on time, because we know there's late fees, and making sure these are all budgeted appropriately when it comes to that, so. Because I know with some of these bills, you know, we're dealing with a deficit is more of, did we budget for these bills that haven't been paid for over a year?
And, I mean, some of these bills are from the Brockton Police Department, with all due respect, and it's for, you know, work that was done in March 2020, supporting the polls. I'm like, I'm looking at this and thinking, I hope these officers got paid. I'm sure they did, but you know what I mean? So anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Clarkson, I appreciate it.
Can I just add, ask one more question too? This, Mr. Clark, there's a couple of bills in here from Eversource, but the due date for payment is coming up this month on the 11th of this month. But I just don't understand why that money wouldn't get paid out of the utilities category that we have. Why would we take from a different category to pay bills that we're actually under, we're under budget in our utilities category? We're at 22.76% for spending, we're at 30.54% including encumbrances and things, but I just, I don't understand why, even just like small amounts, like this is a bill for $891, but it's not due yet, and why would we, why would we spend money from a different category instead of from utilities to pay Eversource for services at Colonel Bell Drive? I apologize, I don't, I don't have the page number, but it's pretty deep into the packet, it's probably toward the center of the packet before the-
It was National Grid, right? Or was it Eversource? Okay, gotcha.
I'm just confused, just because it feels like if we have to vote on things like that, I just, I don't, I look through it quickly, but I don't, I understand where some of these come from, and again, I don't want to take the job of deciding which accounts we're paying things from and micromanaging it, but I just think, like, if we have a budgeted amount for energy services and utilities and things, and then we get a bill from Eversource, I mean, it's not even due yet, but it's not something that seems to, would fit into this category of an overdue bill or something that we haven't spent from previous years. I don't know if that's-
No, I'm looking at it, and let me speak to the broad question you asked, and then to this specific bill, because in looking at it, this bill should probably be on a regular warrant, and I'm honestly not sure why it got in here with this list of unpaid bills, but to the broader question, we're trying to understand how much, how many and how much of these unpaid bills are out there. So paying them out of that one source, I think, gives us the opportunity for this year to quantify exactly the scope of the problem. And although I understand we do have, in the Munis report, lines for utilities, but as I've stated before, one of the real challenges we have in trying to understand the budget is that this report does not necessarily correspond to the budget that you voted. So we're trying to actually reconstruct a budget that will realistically be for next fiscal year that is a very detailed, accurate reflection of what it costs to run the school department. Because the categories that you voted in the budget last spring were so broad, the true budget is in very broad categories, and the lines that you see here are for accounting purposes but don't relate to the budget that you passed. So under normal circumstances, you're absolutely correct. If you look on the city side budget, then the utility lines, utility costs are paid out of there. We're struggling to understand how this Munis budget was created and for what purposes, because that's, as I mentioned earlier, we're transferring money on a fairly regular basis now to accommodate requests for positions because those portions of the budget weren't funded. So we have a budget that is not reflective of the costs to run the school department. And so, at least for these unpaid bills, tracking them in their total so that we know what the scope of the problem was is useful for us in trying to create a more accurate budget for next year. But as to that specific bill, I'll take a look and try to understand what the team was thinking, and maybe mistook that for a different bill, because it is a current year bill.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I understand, if I understand correctly, then it sounds like by looking at, do you mean to say like by taking a deeper dive and looking at the operating costs and expenses at each of the sites, each of the school buildings allows you to make a better projection of how the 2025 budget should look?
That's exactly right.
Right, okay. So, and does that, does that mean you're looking at energy costs and expenses and heating and gas, waste, all of, all those costs for each building, are those built separately? And is that, is that what you mean? Like, that might be why you would see utility bills, like, okay.
Right. And I've seen it done, by the way, both ways in municipal and school budgets. So when we craft that FY '25 budget, we may suggest to you, because ultimately it's your decision, to allocate those energy costs by school. Or in some communities, I've seen it more generalized, in that in a facilities budget, you have an overall budget for gas and electric costs that's then internally allocated to each building. And so as we progress throughout the year, we'll work with Dr. Cobb's and the facilities team, and then you, as to how we want to- team, and then you as to how we want to represent that. But now we're really, we're more fact finding than, than anything else.
Okay. Yeah. Can I ask one last question? I'm so sorry. And I apologize because I know I, I was late the last time that you spoke, Mr. Clarkson. But I was looking at the non-net school spending, um, the first page of the non-net school spending, uh, in, in our packet here. And I was looking at the transportation and special education. And I just, just looking quickly at the percent used and expensed and encumbrances, it looks like we're at 92% and 98% for, um, in, I think that must be in district and out of district, um, non-net school spending. And, uh, those are categorized in the fifth and sixth line of the transportation budget. Um, I'm just thinking in terms of where these charts that we're providing, that we're showing to the public and things, we're, we're at, we're expecting to be at about 42.9% of spending through this date of this meeting. Um, I would just wanted to check on, on what the encumbrances were for. Is that projected cost through the, through the year for students that are placed in special education settings and, and require the transportation for the year? Or would we expect that we're reaching 98 or 97% of a budget item for school transportation for special education and we're not halfway through the year? And we've, is that a situation, like you said, where we haven't accounted for the cost and it's going to cost us double what we thought? Sorry.
No, don't, please don't apologize. That's why I come, so we can have this, this dialogue. It, I think it's helpful for the school committee and for the public to see that we're actually having the conversations we're supposed to have about what it costs to run the Brockton Public Schools. So just this afternoon, uh, I had a fairly detailed discussion with some of our finance folks, uh, our acting budget director, Evan LaCass on the city side and Sarah Butler, who's an accountant on the school side about that very question.
Okay.
Because there are costs that are reflected in this non-net school spending Munis budget that are incurred, that are addressed with additional aid from the Commonwealth. And so they are reflected here because this is how the budget was constructed in Munis. But we had a discussion about the best way actually to reflect those costs, understanding that, that there's additional funding from the Commonwealth to address some of those out of district costs and that they should not be part of the, the, the net school spending budget. But because the transportation department has not had a line item budget, uh, that this is how the costs have been reflected. So, uh, it's, it's a keen observation on your part, uh, and it's something that we're aware of, that it skews what it actually, what the non-net costs are because those costs should be reflected, uh, in some other way, uh, whether it's through, uh, a, a fund or we reflect them in a different way because those costs, uh, are addressed through a different funding source.
Okay.
Does that answer make sense to you?
It does. I mean, that, that was, again, it was my concern. I know this was something we discussed with the 2023 budget was the cost of transportation and specifically transportation in the special education realm, knowing that some, some students are transported from out of town, some students are transported to schools out of town. Um, and we're required, we're obligated to provide that. But it just, when I, when I see that amount, um, already, you know, um, you know, the, the true remaining budget, such small numbers and the percent used to date, um, I just wanted to ensure that, you know, we have a plan for making sure that students are getting where they need to go and that we know and we can anticipate what the costs would be. But knowing now that there is funding from outside, I mean, obviously the, the question is what amount is that? But that's, again, that's another one of those alarming things is if we have to wait until June to find out what we're going to receive from out of state, uh, out of district funding or, or resources to help supplement that. Um, that's again, that's that part where, you know, you're kind of left gasping like, do we know how much we're going to have to spend in total this year? Do, have we budgeted enough for that? And obviously, I mean, that's, that's, you're, you're, you really can't plan, it's very difficult, I think, to plan for the next year, not knowing which students you have in district that might need those services and how do you prepare a budget expecting to send students to out of district placements? You really can't do that. You don't want to, you don't want to plan to do that. But, um, that's, thank you. I think that addresses some of that.
I, I will as a follow-up, uh, look at those rather large encumbrances of the 281 and the 298,000. My hunch, uh, is that those are for contracts that have been executed to transport students. And so the encumbrance has been requested to ensure that there is sufficient funding for the rest of the year. But I will confirm that because those are large encumbrances.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Clark, I liked your idea of when we actually craft the budget to actually have the utilities per school, which will give us a better microscope on which schools are using more electricity, like, so we can get to the root of problem that maybe there's something that we're missing, um, you know, ventilation or new windows or something, um, to break that into, you know, to break it down. So I think that, that should be the course. That's just my, my opinion, which will be easier for us instead of looking at one document that, you know, we can look at the Gilmore, we can look at the Kennedy or the high school and see, uh, which schools are wasting. And then, you know, obviously that's some data for us to, to break in. The only question I have, um, Dr. Cobb's, if you could, um, answer this. I know we have an IT department and I know they're just not changing toners on, on printers. Here we, we have a service to AKERS, um, and I know I'm not, when it was, you know, explained to us when we were installing these, um, vape centers, I thought that was supposed to be going through our IT department to actually install it. So I'm just curious of why we're getting a bill for insta...
No, we, we didn't install it with the IT department.
We didn't.
They, they did, we, we contracted out, we, we don't have the technician to, to actually install them. We have one, actually Joe Campbell.
He's the only one?
Right. So, yeah, the IT techs don't do, they pull, you know, wires generally and install, you know, things like, equipment like that. They're really computer equipment, uh, and laptops, et cetera, detectors, you know, they, they don't do the hard wiring and, and installing smoke detectors, A detectors, those kind of things. That would be, again, that's Joe, basically. So that's why we end up submitting out a lot of the work.
Okay. I mean, I think we'll have a different discussion off camera. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate your time. Oh, yeah, we do have to vote on the, um, okay. So, uh, for the bills, I would entertain a motion for us to approve the packet of overdue, honestly unpaid bills from years, over $113,619.68 towards bills for services rendered in a prior year.
$113,619.68 towards bills and services rendered in prior years. So that's a second.
Can I get a second? Second, okay. Mr. Rodriguez first, properly seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Can I get a show of hands? And can you ask Mr.?
You want to do a roll call because he's remote?
Yeah. Okay, I'll do a roll call because I'm Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
No.
Uh, Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Um, okay. So it's been passed. Um, do we have any items to refer to subcommittee?
Sheriff.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We have A through F. Um, I want to throw it out to the floor. Does anybody have anything on the consent agenda that they'd like to take out of order?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay. And, um, I, let me read through each one of them and then we can take a, um, vote on, on including all of them. So, A, approval of minutes, special school committee meeting on November 2nd, 2023. B, approval of minutes, regular school committee meeting September 20th, 2023. C, approval of 2023, 2024 home education requests. D, request for authorization to accept proposal and expenditure of funds for fiscal year 24 targeted award from Mass DESE, D-E-S-E, for the mandated new IEP form at $112,584. And for the fiscal year 24 municipal cybersecurity awareness grant, which is free services. E, request for authorization to submit a proposal and expenditure of funds for fiscal year 24, FC, capital F C, 344 homeless emergency support grant for $1,000 per child. And then F, acceptance of human resources notifications, appointments certified personnel, appointments non-certified, and personal actions, leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through F?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as stated from A through F.
Thank you. And, um, thank you, Ms. Rivas Mendez, properly seconded by Ms. Sullivan. I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that has been approved. Moving on to unfinished business, um, we have a discussion and potential vote on the amendment to Dr. James Cobb's contract, which we discussed on November 28th, 2023. Everyone in, you know, on the school committee received a copy of that. And so I would entertain a motion to vote on the amended, um, contract for Dr. Cobb's.
Motion to, uh, approve the amendment of, uh, Dr. James Cobb's, uh, contract dated November 28th, 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Rodriguez, properly seconded by Ms. Rivas Mendez. I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that has approved, so moved. And now under new business, we have a discussion and a potential vote regarding the policy manual subcommittee meeting on November 28th, 2023. I know Ms. Azak is not with us tonight. Does somebody want to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I will, um, read the minutes of November 29th, 2023.
Thank you.
We met, um, on this day at the Arnoon School Auditorium. Um, we had Ms. Azak present, Mr. Homer, myself, um, and Mrs. Sullivan was absent. Um, the public was able to view this through, um, the link. Um, also present was Dr. Kathleen Moran and Ms. Marcia Andrade Serpa. Um, Ms. Azak invited School Registration and Parent Information Center Director, Ms. Marcia, who was able to address the policy IBBG and IHBGR homeschooling. Um, she walked through the policy, um, where she talked about, um, she introduced the process, but she also talked about an online forum where parents submit their requests to consider, um, to be considered for homeschooling. Ms. Azak, um, was able to go for the full, the full school committee later in December 2023. Um, then we had Dr. Kathleen Moran, who's Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and she spoke about four particular policies. The, um, GBGF Family Medical Leave Act, um, where we remove the language concerning COVID-19. GBJC Teachers' Personnel File, um, language was changed in the last sentence from will be placed to may be placed. GCIA Philosophy of Staff Development, we added language to item five, um, if funding is available. GBECA Criminal Offender Record, um, information, this policy was re, was moved to ADDA and ADDR. Ms. Azak wanted to investigate further before approving this item. A motion was made by Mr. Homer and it was properly seconded by Ms. Rivas, Mrs. Rivas Mendez. Um, then Ms. Azak, um, read each item from section I instruction and recommended determination for each item advised by the MAS, which is Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Legal Council. And the spreadsheet was color coded. Green was MAS policy, orange recommended to move, pink recommended to add, and blue BPS specific. As it was, the only item that came under this discussion was IA instructional goals. This policy was BPS specific, not in MAS. And it was the will of this group to recommend keeping it and review the goal annually. Um, a motion was made by Mrs. Rivas Mendez and it was properly seconded by Mr. Homer. And then, um, as the time, um, was concluded, a motion was made by Mr. Homer and then properly seconded by Mrs. Rivas Mendez, myself. Um, and then there was no further business, um, and the subcommittee adjourned at 7:08 PM.
Thank you. That was a robust report, Ms. Rivas Mendez.
Always. That's what I'm known for.
Always. So I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, the policy manual subcommittee meeting, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the policy manual subcommittee meeting minutes from November 28th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Homer.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rivas Mendez. So Mr. Homer first, Ms. Rivas Mendez, um, seconded. So I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Excellent. And then, um, oh, the kind of last order of business we have is regarding our Tuesday, December 19th, regular school committee meeting. We need to look at changing the time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM in the BHS Little Theater. And so I'll, I don't think, does anybody have a, a problem with changing the time? I don't think we do. So I'll entertain a motion to change the time from 7:00 to 6:00.
Motion to change the time from 7:00 to 6:00 for our meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Excellent. So Ms. Rivas Mendez, seconded by Mr. Homer. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm a yes as well. Okay. And next we have announcements. Does, and we did put announcements at the end to make sure that we could make announcements for anything coming up. Would anybody like to share any announcements?
Nobody has any, you know? I have something I want to share.
Sure.
And I hope that we can have an open and transparent conversation amongst the elected members. There was a resolve that was, um, that was filed, um, by the city council to invite and quote, it's on the city website, says interim, um, Dr. Cobb's is acting superintendent. It's listed as interim, so I think that's an error, if that could be corrected. Uh, school committee, Vice Chair Kathleen Ellis and Mayor Robert Sullivan to appear before the city council, sitting as the finance committee to discuss the Brockton Public Schools, Brockton High School, and recent issues regarding budget and financial governance, audit, staffing, and matters related therein. Invited, Dr. James Cobb's, Kathleen Ellis is the vice chair, and Mayor Robert Sullivan. And the reason why I am bringing this up is that this body was, there was a resolve that was filed that this committee did take the due diligence and showed some respect to show up to the city council to answer some questions. I was in favor of that because we are elected officials and we do not respond or, you know, uh, answer to the city council. That day was an embarrassment to this committee. And what is happening politically is that we have people on the other aisle that is pointing the fingers at this, that this, at this elected body. And at this point, we should not be interjecting with the city council and pointing fingers at each other. They said some things that were uncalled for, unprofessional, and I will say it again and again and again. And I responded to certain individuals. I don't take anything back that I stated. Everything that I stated was actual and true facts. The only thing that I made was a comment about socks. I take that back, that I did make that comment. It was unprofessional of myself for saying that, but I was in the moment because I have a lot of passion and love for the city of Brockton and for our students. Um, this, this is what we're discussing and what a resolve that they're asking for us, it's all public knowledge. Our meetings are recorded. The city council, as some of us can go back and watch the city council meetings, they can watch this. Nothing is being done in secrecy behind closed doors. They have executive session, we have executive session. Some know they are very educated and... So I know they are very educated and are asking any of those questions. It is my opinion only as one of the members here that this body, neither Dr. Cobb's, neither Kathy Ellis, I can't speak for the mayor, to interject or to report to the council to ask any questions. We already voted, we had a discussion, and we have an audit coming forth, that we just let it play out. Let the audit happen. Once the audit is complete, it's very transparent, we made it as transparent as can be, the council is going to know about it, the public is going to know about it, but there is no other questions that we can answer for them that there is not already public knowledge about. So if a city councillor wants to know what's going on, our meetings and our meetings, I hope they're up-to-date published, they can ask that. And I respectfully ask that any questions that the councillors do have, they put it in writing. Because if I was to go to the clerk's office and file a resolve to bring those councillors before this body, they are not going to show up. And I don't think we should interject or anybody because they singled out this whole body and just added the vice chair as Kathy Ellis to go and answer questions. And if there's any questions that need to be answered by this collective body, it should be the chair, which is the mayor, Mayor Robert Sullivan, and our legal counsel. So I don't know how anybody else feels. I'm very passionate about this and I don't want what happened a few months ago to happen again and we're starting pointing fingers. You know, we all need to fall back and work together. That's what it's all about. We have a problem, let's just fix it. None of this trying to, you know, pound our chest to say who has more authority. Because when it comes down to law, the school committee has more authority. And I hope everybody's educated enough to know how much authority that this body has. And that's what I always preach. Go to the chart and the course, know your role, ask questions, work with our community. And it's also working with our councillors. But going to file this resolve to go and question us, that's not their job. It is not our responsibility to show up to the council for them to grill us. And I hope this doesn't happen.
Yeah, and like mentioned, our agenda's posted, so they're invited to come any time upon us to ask any questions. That's usually how it would be done because we're a different government entity. And any phone calls can be made. I mean, I know a lot of phone calls go to you, Kathy, but I know I was questioned in front of them for accounts review and it was in the fly. And I'll be honest, I felt embarrassed, but I am more than welcome. You can call me, I can answer those questions. And, you know, if I need some time to answer them, please do because it's not a matter of who's doing their job better, but it's a matter of working together for the love of this community and of the city. I also want to make another announcement. For this Saturday, December 9th, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM, the Brockton Main Library Linguals Audit, there's, I'm sorry, there's the Right to Read event, which Dr. Hayward talked about in our DREI subcommittee. That event is the Saturday, December 9th, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM. It's at the Brockton Main Library Linguals Auditorium. That Brockton Main Library is in Main Street. This is a national event that focuses on literacy and Brockton is one of the few in Massachusetts to have it. I'm also like excited because I think as an educator, a lot of times, we don't think about our past of the privilege that we have to be able to read today. And this is, I know this is an event that talks about the right to read and I'm pretty sure the right to have the access to have free public libraries. So just as an announcement, it'll be this Saturday.
That's great. All right, anything else from the body? All right, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Okay, well, Ms. Sullivan, properly seconded by Ms. Rivas Mendez. I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, everybody. Safe travels and have a good night.